Council back to order. For the work session, we have a few items to take care of here. Informational discussion on from Jay within Public Works. Requesting purchase of a Public Works truck. Water and breaks in Richfield Station, which we actually got to see today. And the water tower logo discussion. And take it away, Jay.
Thank you.
Sure. Real quick, it's a budgeted purchase. You have the memo there, 2009 truck will be trading in. I will come in your packet, you'll have time before council. I'll include four quotes with my recommendation. I'm researching now, they have some old new stocks and trucks they didn't sell last year. And I'm trying to work a deal. And keep in mind, once I purchase it, I'll have the total price, but we send it right out, get it undercoated and rigged and set up with a plow and spreader. But all of it's under budget. I just giving you the heads up. Second thing, we've had three saddle failures in Richfield Station since our last council meeting. I don't know if any of you remember the last administration, I kind of did a PowerPoint with some things there. So I'm doing some investigating work that's going to start tomorrow. Spot check in a few areas. And then I want to come back to the council. It won't be this council meeting, probably next work session or the following one. With some recommendations, we might have to, the best plan may be the proactive approach like we did it. But I want to do some research and get some real numbers and where we're at and just inform you. So I don't want surprises. So really, that was it. The water tower logo might, it's the same that's out there. If we're united on our CB and facing the state highway bridge, if you will, the one location, if that's the counselor's pleasure, I'll get an up to date quote because those quotes are only 30 days. And I could have that before council meeting and we can make a decision. And trying to keep it short and sweet, but that's it. If there's any questions, I'll take.
So go for it.
Perfect.
All right. Great, thank you. Josh.
It looks like I get two things on here. One's for the Maryland Rural Water Apprenticeship Program. This is something that we've been working on over the last couple of months with Maryland Rural Water. It's a new program that is geared to help operator trainees become full operators, get them licensed. It's been a difficult thing, get licensed operators in the state for quite a few years now. We're looking at two apprentices for the year. The one, the budgeted portion to be concerned about is when they are apprentices, they have to go into what's considered progressive wage. Starts them at 65% of the full operator scale and increasing in 10% increments every six months. Roughly, probably six months to complete each quarter of their apprenticeship. It's a two-year program. We're looking at which operators we're going to use. We're still finalizing that. We have a couple of guys that are, may choose not to go in there because they're doing really well on their attempts on the exam. We had one operator or one trainee who just became licensed as an operator. So we're in a little bit of flux figuring that out, but we will have that finalized in the next couple of months. The, also requesting for expenditure for our airflow gauges, differential pressure gauges for our aeration basins. The aeration basins have three differential pressure gauges. They are used to identify the rate of flow of air going into each basin, which is used for dissolved oxygen to keep the process operating. The current gauges, we were installed in 1988 with one calibration done in 99. Just estimated based off of plan sheets I've seen. One of the gauges malfunctioned in 2017 and they found a differential pressure gauge from somewhere in the plant and installed it there. But it doesn't read on the same pressure range and the pressure or the flows that it's showing are not even possible. They're, they're on the same level of what's coming out of the blowers for all three basins. Since these gauges are connected to a very particular manifold, air piping. We're wanting to replace in kind with the same type of gauges. So we're looking at the Midwest, Midwest Instruments gauges to match the ones that are there. Miller Energy is the authorized distributor for this area for Midwest gauges. The total cost for the project will be 13,275. We do have that budgeted in this current fiscal year. And that's basically all I have on that one, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions?
I just had a quick clarifying question. With the apprentice program, those are the folks who would enroll into that are current town employees or?
They're current town employees, current trainees.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
The way, the way it operates is one trainee would work under one licensed operator as a mentor. And we would coordinate through Maryland Rural Water for all the classes and training.
Okay, that's what I thought, I thought so, but I just wanted to clarify so I wasn't confusing myself. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is the planning and zoning critical area ordinance discussion led by Samelia.
So I am bringing regards from Sarah who was not able to be here. So I'm going to read up the TLDR regarding this particular ordinance. If you have specific questions, please prioritize getting them to Sarah because the adoption of the ordinance is time sensitive. So the changes provided in the attached document represent the state required requirements that were set forth in October 2024, as well as updates that are required that are periodically set forth in state law. So it used to be a period of every six month, you would have to, six years, you would need to review your critical area ordinance. And the state just changed that to every 10 years. And the planning commission has been working on these changes for the past two to two and a half years. So what you'll be voting on, on, at the next council meeting would be to sign off on the changes as presented. If you have comments that you'd like to have addressed, please send them to the town planner as soon as possible and just make sure you CC me. And it'll be on a vote, on the agenda for vote next week.
So will it be as presented after she addresses our comments? Or will it be as presented as it is here?
It's as presented as it is here because of the process. It's not, it doesn't mean that you can't make changes to it later. But my understanding is that the process of modifying what is here, like let's say you said, I don't like what this, what we're putting forth and I'm against it. Then it would need to go back both to the planning commission and to the critical area. And to the critical area commission. For a review. And so if, so the council could decide not to sign. But that would impact the town's critical area program and our ability to administer planning and zoning in the affected critical areas. So, yeah.
So that makes this a rubber stamp. But I just want to, I just want to point out an important typo. So that she can fix the typo.
Page?
It is on page three.
Thirty?
Three.
Three.
Page three, section A. I believe that should be 290-17C, D and E, not 270.
Okay. I will make note and follow up with the town planner regarding that.
And I'd, I'd like her to present something about the growth allocation changes because they are significant. In this, there's some different calculations. So I'd be interested to know how and why they changed.
The growth allocation changes, okay. Right.
Thanks for catching that.
Yes, and then in the fourth, in, in the resource conservation section, I would be curious to know.
Can you clarify what page that's on?
Uh, page nine.
Nine.
Why the Comar references don't match the, the references in, in Comar or resource conservation area. So I'll, I'll just keep it at those few things. That I would like her to comment on.
Very helpful though. Wanted to be right. Okay. Anything else on this before we move on? All right. So the next item on the agenda is new gen analysis results.
Hi, Mike. You should have the ability to.
Oh, great.
Move through your slides.
Wow.
Good evening.
It's working.
Yes, absolutely. Good to see everybody again. So last time we were here, we, we went up to what we call the revenue requirements, the cost of the system, kind of the total cost. And today we're going to show you is actual, without having to bring in any additional revenue, total revenue, but tweaking the rate designs, what that does to different customers, so. I think I showed this last time, these are just some of the business fundamentals. As an enterprise fund, as a water and sewer enterprise fund, ideally your revenue should exceed your expenses. Should be run as a business, so therefore you want some revenue sufficiency. We want to prepare for some reserves, so we, we recommend two reserves, an operating reserve and then a capital reserve. And then obviously you want to reinvest in your system, so you have a capital improvement plan, you have projects put together by your staff and want to make sure we're able to fund those. So what are the, some of the assumption, some of the assumptions, some factors that affect your rates and charges? Operating maintenance expenses, so here inflation is a, is a big factor. You may have seen recently chemicals have been more expensive, different things like that. Right now, we're, we're pretty much following the CPI over the past 20, 30 years, this has been about two and a half, 3%. I know a couple of years ago it was a little higher, but it seems to be coming back down to, to normal levels. CIP, as I mentioned, the capital improvement plan, so this is your investment in your treatment, distribution and collection system. So the pipes in the ground, the treatment plants, you want to make sure we're reinvesting in those. Any debt service, any existing debt service, any principal and interest payments you're paying now. And then if we have any debt service from capital projects or we plan on funding those with debt, extending that over the life of the projects, that would add on to an existing debt. For customers, water usage and sewage generation, we're being conservative here and saying you're fairly built out. So we're not planning on any aggressive growth, we're saying the town's fairly built out, so. And then the same thing on miscellaneous, so miscellaneous revenues is anything other than the rates and charges. So interest penalties, you know, ancillary fees, things like that. And again, just being conservative there, having no growth in that. The two reserve targets I mentioned, so an operating reserve balance, this is tied to your operating expenses. So as your operating expenses increase, so should the reserve amount. And there we're tying those to 90 days of operating expenses, so matching roughly a quarter of billing or 25% of those expenses. And then a capital reserve balance tied to your fixed assets, so the value of your fixed assets. And we're not doing this in one year, getting to the 2% of system value, we're getting there over 10 years. And so I'll show you those in the graphs. So again, just kind of reiterating, we have to pay as your own expenses, that's your day to day, your salaries, your benefits, your materials. Things that don't really vary with water usage, other than maybe chemicals and electricity. Current debt service, so whatever's on the books, you really got to cover those two, operating maintenance expenses and current debt. And then if you don't want your system to fall apart, you want to make sure you're doing some capital projects. So those that are cash funded come directly from the funds in that year. And then new debt service really spreads out those large lumpy projects over the life of the, of the actual asset. And then the reserve contributions. So we add all that and that's our revenue requirement. So here we're going to look at water first. So on the left chart, that is the expenses, the revenue requirements. So the, the blue here are your operating expenses, so here's our, well, now we're in 26, but this was our current year, these were our five-year plan. The green being the cash funded projects. A little bit of purple in here is new debt service and then a little bit of orange for the capital contribution, or capital reserve contributions. I mentioned, we're not looking at doing any rating, any revenue increases. So say you bring in this line right here is what you bring in, so a little over, I don't know if that's 1.2 million. We're not bringing in any additional revenues, we're staying at the 1.2 million. So that's why when you see these two lines here, current revenue, proposed revenue, there's not two separate lines because they're exactly the same line. And then this is the impact on the fund balance for water. So anytime you see a gap here, that just means revenues are higher than expenses, you have slight surpluses. So all these surpluses add on to your cash balance. So if we're starting with just over a million dollars, this is our target in red. You're clearly meeting that target and you're building above and beyond. So that's good news, but unless, unfortunately, we get to the next slide, which is the sewer, we kind of have the opposite effect. So here again, sewers more expensive, treatment plants are more expensive, it's more expensive to run. So you can see water, I'm sorry, what, you see the operating senses are a lot higher. Current debt service, you actually have some current debt services sewer, you don't have any for water, so you're paying that down. You could see that red gets smaller. This is cash funding of projects in green. And then we do start debt funding some projects in purple. So as we pay down the existing debt, we're adding a little bit of future debt. And then these are those contributions to reserves. So here is the revenues here, so because these bars are higher than that revenue, we're, we're ending up with shortfalls each year. So in that case, your cash balance actually goes to zero. And then if it could, it would go negative, if there was possibility. But so what I did is you can consider the water and sewer utilities as one fund, so I did a combined. So this, this is a different scale, if you want to look, this is $7 million, the last ones are three and a half. Since they're essentially doubling, we're stacking everything double, so this is now water and sewer. Pretty much consider your fund as one fund, water and sewer. And here you're just about covering expenses with revenues. And so here, we don't really have any surpluses or shortfalls, you're kind of breaking even. The cash you have today, you would continue to have that over the, the five-year period. And we didn't, you know, no fudging here, this is kind of just how it worked out. Water was, you know, showing surpluses and sewer was showing shortfalls, yes.
Wait till the end to take questions.
That's up to you. You're gonna forget it?
Yeah, does this, this reflects like the 20% discount and everything that we've been giving?
No, this is going back to regular, I think your 20% discount you took out of the general fund, right? So this is excluding that, yeah.
And I believe there's two debt services that are scheduled to drop off in 2027, 2028?
And that's probably, that's this red that gets smaller.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so something probably drops off in here and then in here.
It was the E and R upgrade and there was one other one for the treatment plant. Okay.
Yep. Okay, so let's move to the rate designs, remembering that we're not bringing in any additional total revenue. We're assuming no change to current revenue, but we are tweaking the design so that different customers will see different bills. Some customers may see a lower bill, some customers may see a higher bill. So it's kind of that zero sum game, if one gets a lower bill, someone else is going to get a higher bill. Some of the directive we were given was, hey, those fixed charges are really high. I know it's $50 for water, $100 for sewer, 100, sewer. So what we want to do is shift some of the fixed revenue to more variable revenue. So right now, what you're bringing in with those, those high fixed fees per EDU, you're bringing in about 58% of your revenue is fixed. So just the, the fixed fees for EDU and variable is about 42%. And then you have the quarterly usage tiers, so one to 4,000 gallons, 4,000, 8,000, 8,015, and then over 15 per quarter. And those are kind of like your marginal tax rates, so whatever you fall into, you would go through the tiers until you get to the, the one you fall into. And then these multiples, this is essentially how much higher each tier is than the base tier one. So like tier two, you're roughly paying 2% more than you are for your tier one rate. Tier three, you're paying 5% more than you are your tier one rate and so on. So I think we talked about last time, there's not a real big difference between these here. So it almost defeats the purpose of having an inclining block rate because you're really, the purpose of that is to send a pricing signal. So if somebody falls into this high tier, they say, oh, oh gosh, look at that, I should probably start conserving, you know, it shows water as a valuable resource. So some of the things we looked at for alternative, I was shifting some of that fixed revenue to variable. So in this case, we actually went to 40%, 60, so almost flipped it, instead of 60, 40, went to 40, 60. So by doing that, even without bringing in additional revenue, it allows us to lower that fixed charge. But in turn, it means you're going to collect more from the variable charges. So you'll get it less from the fix, but more from the tiered rates. The other thing, we made a small tweak to the tiered rates, just so, essentially so they can be divisible by three. So if you ever had any monthly customers, if you ever decide to do that, a lot of places are going to monthly. These are now divisible by three, where these were not as clear. I didn't want to go too extreme and you say, oh, what if we do 60,000 or 90,000? Because then you'd see all sorts of variables and changes. So we tried to be evolutionary instead of revolutionary here. And then the tiers, we did make these a little more extreme in the differences. So here you'll actually see now, when you go to the next tier, you're going to pay 25% more than you did in tier one, 50% more and 75% as opposed to these. And so what that essentially does, and we'll see when we look at the rates, the higher you make these tiers, the lower these rates end up. So if somebody can stay in that tier one, they get the benefit of that conservation. And then just as bookends, these aren't recommendations, but we did look at, we did an alternative two, and what if we went 100% variable? We just got rid of that fixed charge. So we got rid of the $50, we got rid of the 100. You no longer have that guaranteed revenue, which is a problem in the utility industry now, because we're seeing a lot of, you know, declining usage. So you'd be entirely dependent on, on volume metric. So I don't recommend it, but I wanted to show you what it would look like. And then I went the other extreme and was said, what if we got rid of variable rates and just went to all fixed? Now that would really hurt a small user because now they have no control of their usage and they're just paying a huge fixed fee. So with that, so this is just of your current, so we didn't change the design at all, current rate design. And because we're not raising any revenue, it's just the same rates. This is literally just, this is what you have today, it would be the same thing over the five years. So nothing too drastic here. And this is the, I mentioned, so the $50 per EDU and then $100 per EDU and then those inclining block rates. This is going to more of the blended, we'll call an alternative rate design one. So here you can see what happens by shifting from that, you know, that roughly 60% fixed revenue to 40%. You're going now, you can drop that $50 charge to $35. So right off the bat, you're saving $15. Most of your customers are residential, most of them paying for one EDU. Some of your larger commercial pay multiple EDUs, but everybody essentially gets a break on that. However, then we shifted to variable, so then you see these ones are going to go up, right? Because now we went from only 40% coming from variable rates to 60%. So now this goes from 327 to 346, 334. And so, so you could try, try to do the math in your head, oh, what if I use 20,000? But I have some sample bills to actually show you, so we don't have to, we don't have to guess here. Same thing on sewer, the $100 would now go down to 82, so it'd be about an $18 savings there on the fixed charge. However, you'll see here, these rates are a lot higher because of that, that shifting. So let's look, so here's, here are the, the bookends again, I don't recommend these, these are just kind of interesting to look at. This is going away from any fixed charges, so the fixed charge goes away, so here's what you're currently paying. So that 327, in order to account for losing that $50 per EDU, would have to go to 577. And then the highest rate would have to go all the way up to 1010. You can imagine somebody uses a lot of water, they really blow through that, if they're a 1EDU, they blow through that 50 pretty quickly, but then they start, they would hit these really high rates. So not very sustainable. And then the same thing on sewer, again sewer being more expensive, that high rate would go all the way up to $23, so. And then the other bookend going all the way to fixed. So if we didn't have any variable rates, we didn't have to worry about, you know, weather and watering the lawns and hey, you know, we're not sending a real pricing signal about the, the value of water. Everybody would, if you paid $87, everybody per EDU instead of 50, you wouldn't have to worry about variable rates. And then sewer would have to go from 100 to 205. Now, when, I know that wasn't the direction I wanted to go, I just kind of wanted to show you the, the bookends of what it looks like. So ideally we fall somewhere in the middle of those two. So here's where I talk about actual bills. So again, it's nice to see what the rates are, but it's hard to, to figure out in your head what that means in a bill. This is a, a small customer, so using about 5,000 gallons per quarter. Median customer, so at least the data we received, it looks like about half the bills are less than 10,000 and half are above it, if you're a typical residential. If you're a large residential, you'd see about 15,000. And then we went to like a really excessive users, like 30,000. Here's what they pay right now for their bills, so broken out between water, sewer and then combined. Again, if the current design, nothing changes, everybody pays the same bill, that wouldn't change. The alternative one, which I'm just calling the blended, you could see this water bill will go down, sewer bill will go down for the small user. So you'd be saving about $32. If you're the median customer, and I'm probably going to just focus on this median customer most slides, your bill goes down about $22 per quarter. The large customer now, as you start using more and this alternative one, you can see there's, I'll show you a chart. There's like a pivot point where if you use over X usage, your bill starts going up. And so that we're almost getting to that with 15,000. You can see water, actually the bill goes up, sewer is slightly down, so you're still seeing about a $2 discount. But here when we get to this 30,000 gallon user, they're actually seeing an increase of $98. So we're still not bringing in any more revenue, but these customers are getting breaks, these customers, you know, are having to pay that. And I have another slide that shows the comparison of the current design and the alternative one. But I show you where a lot of the customers are. So you may say, oh my gosh, that's going to kill us, but there's not a lot of customers at that level. A lot of the customers are at these levels, so. So it's kind of like the most good for the most amount of customers. And then the bookends, again, I'm not, I'm not going to recommend these, but here's we went all variable. As you'd imagine, the more you use, the much higher your bill goes. All fixed, it wouldn't matter how much you use, doesn't matter if it's 5,000, 10,000, you pay the same bill, 292. So that, that all fixed would kill the small user, they're paying another $80. But then it helps a really large user variable and then the exact opposite on the, on all variable. So here's one of the charts I was referring to, so, and I'll kind of walk you through here. Here's all the legends, you can remember what the alts, the alternatives are. Current rate design is this blue one, so right now, somebody uses 5,000, pays that amount, these are combined water and sewer bill, somebody uses 30, pays that amount. If we went to alternative rate one, it's, it's a slight pivoting, I suppose. It looks like it's pivoting around this 12,000 or so gallons. So now, instead of the blue where the current is, if you use 5,000, you get a slight discount. Same as here, same as all these usage levels until we hit about here where these blue and green cross. Now green ends up to be more expensive than blue, so that all these customers would see an increase. And again, we have to define who those actual customers are. The bookends, alternative rate design two, as you'd imagine, it's all variables. If you use hardly anything, you don't pay much, if you use a lot, you pay a lot more. And then the fix, everybody pays the same. All right, so this one, I think it's helpful, but I have to explain how it looks, it's a lot of lines, a lot of access. On the left side here is the percent change in the bill, so if your bill's going up by a certain percent or down. This is the usage, so I have increments of 1,000 going all the way up to a 50,000 gallon per quarter customer. The blue is just saying, again, hit on this again, the current rate design customer is not going to see an increase. If you're stuck with the current rate design, everybody sees a 0% increase. But the green is what kind of our recommended, or at least our blended alternative right now. You can see anybody up to 15,000 sees almost a decrease in the bill. And then anybody over that sees an increase in their bill, to an extreme, if, if somebody's out there using 50,000 gallons and they have one EDU, they'd see, you know, almost a 30% increase. But I think what's important here is this secondary access, this is the count of bills. So this is actually how many customers fall into these. So this orange line, this shows that roughly most of your customers are here, right? Because this is what, this is 500 bills, so almost 500 bills are at 5,000, 6,000, 7,000. All these, this adds up, I think almost to half of all bills fall right here. So while this one is painful, it might be five customers. So it's really large commercial. This is the majority of your customers who were trying to help lower that fixed fee for them and lower their bill. Just, yeah, so note, this is roughly 9,500 bills, about half fall right there. This comparison with some surrounding utilities, so right now you fall right here. Blue being water, green being sewer, so your total bill, this is your current. With that alternative one, you would come down here, if this is for a 10,000 gallon median customer. You can kind of see where everybody else falls. We don't know if others are doing increases, so this is just based on whatever their latest rates are. If anybody else is doing a rate increase, you know, they'll go up as well, so. But in this case, you know, typically I'm showing, I'm showing it, the, the alternative being higher, because usually I do in a rate increase. But in this case, from the directive of the council, you would show this alt one, you'd actually end up with a lower bill. So the findings, you know, water revenues we showed are sufficient to cover their own costs and meet that minimum reserve balance. Sewer, on the other hand, is not, but when you combine them, they are sufficient as a whole utility fund. And then just the alternative rate one options I showed was, was shifting from fixed fees to usage, going from 58/42, from 58/42 to 40/60. Just a slight shift in those, those usage tiers, so instead of 4,000 to 3,000, instead of 8,000 to 9,000. And then just showing, just a little more of an impact to the, to the difference between the tiers when you, when you use more water. So with that, questions? I know I speak fast, so.
That's good. If you don't mind, okay. So, one, it's a lot to digest, so I think that's for us. I, I know that the model's going to get shared out for us, I know Eric and Lori, I know Eric specifically has called that out, so that'd be shared. I did want to call out that for the council, there are still a couple of items that we have to think through when it comes to this. One is the salaries that are in there, right? That is, I think that's just an open-ended question that we've all talked about a few different times of, who, what percentage or this or that? I think we need to, we, at some point in time, we need to nip that in the bud and make a call of. Who, what percentage, or this or that. Um, I think we need to, we we, at some point in time, we need nip that in the button, make a call of. Working with the staff of who, who goes in there, is it percentages, is it holes, what's that, what does that total look like? Because, you know, of. We're at this rate today because uh, that is after, you know, what previously was almost nine hundred thousand, now this year is seven hundred thousand. Um, I am very intrigued when uh, listening to this. When you look at the full fixed and then you look at the two variables. So in my personal opinion is, and is kind of like, how are we, how can we look at? Uh, the two extremes. So there is a lot of users that I I I asked specifically, there's, there is a good chunk of users that are at like. Under a thousand gallons a quarter. Um, so I had asked the question or under like, one, either they're very, very, very efficient with their water. Or is that our second homes? And are we then prioritizing second homes over, you know, families who use water? And I I've told Mike before. I know what the numbers say. Um, I get it, ten thousand seems or fifteen thousand is like the norm of like average users. I looked in multiple neighborhoods and I like my, I looked at my personal one with four kids, I don't know what we're doing. Uh, I, we're flushing toilets left and right, I guess. Uh, but. I I just think that there could be a balance. And then what I personally want to do with the models, I want to take a look at. Um, I'm not sure that I would prioritize any second home. If you can afford a second home, I'm not prioritizing you, uh, sorry. Um, and then second, um, how do we take care of the low user residents? And the middle class family, and then maybe even, you know, I I don't know, we'd have to talk this out and think through, I need to play with the models to come up with something to my, my personal. Uh, approach to this would be like. Maybe there's a fixed fee up to a certain amount that. Uh, covers residence in a manner, you know, the fixed fees go up after, so I don't know, we'll come with some, and then at some point in time, there's variables that get introduced later on. Have you ever seen anything like that, where you have fixed fees up to fifteen, twenty thousand gallons, twenty five thousand, thirty thousand, and then anything over that? Uh, I do understand that that is going to be, uh, probably look like we're targeting large, high users slash businesses.
Well, one thing we talked about before was you could vary the fixed fee by meter size. So those are larger meter sizes could would pay more, because they can draw more from the system, the meter costs more to maintain. But because of that E D U system, we kind of, okay, we kind of muddy what you already have with the E D Us, and you've already figured out. You know, how many equivalents each one is. So the meters kind of are the same thing as as calculating equivalents.
Yeah.
Um, but you could kind of look at, I guess, with some sort of E D U checker audit of, are they at the right um, spot where they are based on their meter size and things like that?
Well, so I I'll, I'll finish up with just saying that I I think I need to personally play with this to see what the impacts was. I do know when looking at um, uh, the email. And I'll make sure everybody has a copy, I just saw it. Um, you do have the, and I believe we're going to train. Somebody in town staff to help us use this model.
I recommend, you know, somebody in finance, somebody in operations, maybe.
Me and Lori, Lori will come visit you, Dan, and get training on this at some point in time. Yeah, to get training. So, okay, that that's all I had. I just wanted to call out that, you know, that my priorities is kind of like, how do we balance that middle ground? Um, and not the two ex- extremes.
Uh, one question would be, um, does this, is this the end of our contract with Nugent, or are we able to give them feedback tonight to take back and? Give us something based on our feedback tonight?
I mean, yeah, I'll, I'll take, I can make, I'm not going to, not huge structural changes, but we'll, we'll do a draft report. So yeah, if you have anything you want us to incorporate in that weekend.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, my one concern with um, I like alternative one, I think, if I had to pick one.
And I, well, yeah, again, I kind of forced you to want all, but the other two aren't, I wouldn't, they're not even. In the realm, I just kind of wanted to show how extreme it could be. So one could be tweaked, right? That's the thing. It's, I think it's going to be somewhere around there, I think, but.
My concern is that um, the large users see a thirty percent increase and they're, they realize that they need to start saving water.
Right.
And then, so what happens if they significantly cut their usage? And that that's one of our largest sources of revenue for that.
Yeah, sometimes that's the uh, the issue with conservation, right? Because.
I mean, it's not a, yeah, it's not a bad thing to to conserve.
They talk about, you know, like price elasticity, or like, uh, how um, flexible are they to raising prices and? Um, there's been all sorts of studies done, I don't think these definitive, sometimes you say like every ten percent increase in rates, you might see like a one percent drop in usage or something like that.
Okay.
Um, but some customer, you know, sometimes it's just their, their business requires that much water. Maybe you see a car wash, but then our recycling water, maybe they start trying to, they should be doing that now and now anyways, but if they're not, they might do something like that, but.
And we would accomplish this change in rate with a budget amendment. Basically.
Yeah, we would have to do a, but yeah, so the twenty percent discount is through the fiscal year twenty twenty six, but it was designed to only be in place to allow us. Um, breathing room to work through this approach and uh, come up with it. So. Um, I think like, it's going to take us a little bit of time. Um, I do think that we should time box ourselves and try to come up with a target of when we want to cut it off and say like, hey, this is when we want to. Make a decision, so we're not just sitting on it forever by any stretch. I mean, that's kind of what we all committed to when we gave the twenty percent discount for twenty six.
Alright. Yeah, that's about it for me. The only other thing is, um, when we do the, do the budget amendment, we can also reflect the forty thousand dollars, I think Josh said he saved with the. Was it the bio solid removal? We, there was something that you said came in forty thousand dollars cheaper, I'll have to go back and look. But that might be something we can add to the um, budget amendment.
You're suggesting that in the interest of saving money?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I think it would be, that's a, it's a fair proposal, and I would. Direct that towards Dan when the time comes, depending on the rate structure that you all design.
Alright.
And then, um, he'll make a determination on what is best to put forth for the final amended budget.
Okay, that's it.
Any else?
Uh, yeah, I have some comments. Um, this is such an important issue, and. This is now the third time that this council has received a high level briefing at the same time as the public. Um, before we've had to digest it, so that's a little frustrating. Um, I think last time you were here, we discussed um, stretching out the rate, the um, the tiers.
You mean additional tiers or just changing the ones that are?
Either one, either one. Uh, those tiers are targeted right where families still use. Um. I think families got a hu- a huge increase in water. Um, they don't make a commercial profit off of their water. Um, and um, I. Somebody from your company, and and I've heard in. Other places say that that the the more stratified tiered structure is is more of a best practice than. Keeping the tiers down there and. At the family level. Um, so I'm disappointed to not see a more stratified tier structure. Um, and then we have the problem of if we keep the twenty percent discount, we are bleeding the general fund of half a million dollars annually.
And we're, yeah, we're not having the twenty percent discount built into this.
Right.
That's a board decision.
Yeah, I would, I would have liked to have seen a lot of this earlier before, um, you know. Before a public meeting where I had to comment, and I didn't know. What I was going to be commenting on. So I would just say my, my general comments are, is that. This does not leave us with the options that I myself was looking for, which was to. Um, more properly place the burden um, on higher users than on families.
Now, I will say that.
For water usage, um. That's what I was hoping that we would find a way to do. Um, I also was hoping to get a better understanding of E D Us and how we. Have accounted for E D Us, um. And I don't know if, was the water sewer manual upgrade part of this or was it not?
Um, it was not a part of this, but but Nugent has provided scope of work for both uh, E D U. Which would have been a shared, we, when we've talked about it as a, as a group, it's been about. The shared cost because the E D Us also impact our partners. Um, and how we do billing there. So they've provided a scope of work for both E D Us and for the water and sewer manual, but it was not a part of this. Original agreement.
Okay, so so for me, I feel like we're largely back to square one, where we're just. Talking about the same thing that we've talked about at two different iterations. So I. I don't know what the answer is. I would love to see, um, I see your, your graphs. I would love to see where those cross points. Um.
So these are, these are your tiers here, this is the alternative tiers.
Yeah.
And so as I mentioned before. More than half of your customer base is under that top tier.
Sure, but there, I mean, more than half, I mean. There's another large portion of people that are families, as as Jamie pointed out, and um, I don't know that. That they should be discounted and and thrown on the other, other how, I would like to see that X, I guess, move further out. Um. To the right, correct.
Um, now, I will say not, you were talking about stratification and more tiers. It's fairly common to see only three or four tiers, if you, if you look at across utilities.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there might be one off, though, there has ten tiers or something crazy like that.
I mean, are they typically all under thirty thousand gallons, or do they come out further?
I mean, that would be, so typically the way you set it up is like the first tier would be like your minimal uses, that's just your cooking, cleaning, you know, maybe. You know, two person household.
Mm-hmm.
The next tier might be more typical residential, and then the third tier might be you're getting your outdoor usage. And then the last year is really excessive, and and even at over fifteen thousand. It's fairly excessive usage if you look at the entire customer base, because it's only maybe twenty percent of usage that falls into that tier. Sure, you could add maybe, I don't know, maybe a thirty thousand one, and maybe it captures five percent of the usage, and so maybe. And then you make that, I might make it two times, three times as high. I don't know how much you want to penalize that high, that high tier, but.
I I envision something more like that, because there's quite a, a lot of users that are. You know, in that fifteen to thirty thousand dollar, thirty thousand gallon range, it does taper off, but.
Yeah, I mean, you're essentially.
And and those are your families, and those, those are the people that are buying, you know. A, a couple sets of school clothes.
And we, yeah.
You know.
And they also have pools. Like, we're going to have to be for real about this. Like, you got a pool back there, you you putting out more money, you have more money, like, that's the thing. So. I don't know, what we need to do is recognize exactly where we want that cutoff to be, and that's what we got time to do based off what the work is that you've done. Um, and with Jamie and Lori talking about putting in the work on the models, I think that we can look at what we. We need to identify where we want it to be. If we're not good with it changing that fifteen, what does it look like if we go to twenty? What is it like if we go to twenty five? Because this isn't the time for us to go back and forth with you about the work that you've done. We need to figure out what we want it to be. Do that work and then come back and present it and vote on it, right? Am I, am I mistaken?
Why we should have gotten this prior to this.
So I'll interject here, the purpose of this presentation was for Nugent to present their results. And you have the time now to convene as a council. At the next work session, if you want to have special meetings, you'll have the models, they should be in your inboxes now. So that you can play around with those things and come to it, because ultimately, the decision on where you put that limit is the councils.
Right.
Nugent just gave, is provides the tool so you can make that decision. And the idea isn't for you to make the decision today. The idea is for you to understand how they came to make the models, so that you can play with the models to make a decision at a later time. And the budgets were constructed in a way that it doesn't penalize the residents. If you guys take additional time to make that decision. So, yeah, you guys have.
Yeah, I would say this is, this is findings, this isn't a recommendation presentation. So. Uh, this is, I can do infinitesimal number of alternatives, right? And so cows come home. But uh, I don't think you're going to need more than four tiers. You can, you can do it on the model. We, so I I gave some directions, it's dynamic, right? You could type in instead of fifteen thousand. Thirty thousand, it'll instantly change the rates, and you'll say, oh, gosh, I don't want that. You can check the bill, oh, gosh, I don't want that. So you can, you can play with it, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that goes back to, I think that goes back.
Costs, um, do you have data on, on the operating costs?
Model has, yeah, spreadsheet on operating expenses. So we are using the latest twenty twenty six budget. So what Dan and staff provided, so if. If there's issues with that, you'd have to take that with staff, if you, if you want an expense line lowered or something like that. We, we kind of took it at face value, we didn't. Analyze and say, oh, that doesn't sound right for this and this number of employees.
Yeah, that was part of the forty thousand I was talking about, but we'll talk after.
And in that case, if you can lower costs. I mean, that would be, instead of doing a zero percent increase in revenue, maybe you do a decrease in revenue if you're, if you're comfortable with that, and having less revenue brought into the utility fund.
Well, we still have to account for the, the revenue that is funded from the general fund into the utility fund.
Right, yeah.
The whole idea I, I thought we were working towards was a self sustaining. Um.
Well, then we have an increase for.
And, and. I don't know if Jay's future saddle replacements are figured into our expenses or, um.
I mean, there's a comprehensive capital plan in there, so there, yeah, you can, you can go to that tab and see all the projects, how much they cost.
Um.
But but you did say that we are, in current state, we are equal, like the, the, the revenue from, when you combine water and sewer, we're equal. So the. The, the reason there's the, the twenty percent. Decrease is because we had seven hundred thousand dollars in excess fund in the general fund from other revenue we were generating. So we leverage that to give us uh, some breathing room to work through this. And I'm looking at the, the model now, it's very, very intense. So. Again, like, when we look at this model, you know, Dan's going to have to get trained on the model, we're all going to have to get in here and play with it and then come back. So. Going back to the comments earlier, I, I, this is not designed to be a. We need a decision today, and this is the model we're going with. Like, I want to play with this, I want to see, I want to do exactly what you said, there's, there's, there's a middle, there's, I'm, where is that sweet spot that we're comfortable with? Uh, and and I think that's going to take a lot of. Diddling around with this model and then coming up and saying, this is where we're going. So it could be this next work session, it could be the following work session where we. Have this continued conversations to say, this is what I think, and this is what I learned, and that, you know, and work off of that.
Yeah, and it's really important for us to do, stick to a time constraint we're getting done, because if I'm not mistaken for clarity, that twenty percent was only for.
No, it's for the full year.
For the entire year.
But that wasn't the desire. So it's for the entire year, but that was not the intent is to keep it for the entire year. The intent was to give us. Time to, because I, I think when you presented, you said, hey, I would probably not do it for the first two. Uh, quarters or something along that line. So that technically would take us to January. Uh, of this year, so that, you know, if we, if we stayed in line with that, I mean, we're saying in the next four months, can we solve this problem? I, 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 I do think in four months, we should figure out what that middle ground is.
One thing you want to do with any rate change is you'll want to put that in your billing system, kind of do a mock bill run to make sure it still brings roughly the same amount of revenue. Because you don't want to end up sending bills in there.
Which means we still should have that time constraint. If we got to do all this, we have to train, we have to put it in the model, we got to make sure things work, so.
Well, and then we got to have the conversation if we bring on um, some potential replacement. Uh, vendors and how we want to approach that. So there, I just think there's a lot that we have to think through over the next few months.
Well, we, we got a starting point.
When is the E D U? Resolution expected?
From what perspective?
I mean, I know you have partners, so that will probably speed that along and make that um, pretty solid work.
So we have a proposal now, and we'll present that to the partners and. I can't really give you a, a timeline. We're working to try to resolve a number of outstanding things that we inherited all at the same time. So that impacts the, the timeline, unfortunately.
Is the expectation of uh, you and the partners, like before the next budget cycle, is it?
Um, that would be ideal, right? Um. Obviously sooner rather than later, because there's other, are larger fish to fry. Um, but this is something that has caused a great deal of agita for not just the town, but our partners, and so it's a priority to resolve.
Sure, yeah, and and it's, it's a huge piece of this puzzle. Um, and another piece of the puzzle is um, the capital connection.
Yeah.
Uh, disputes.
Yeah, so there's been, so um, Ms. Buckingham mentioned it, there's been recent um. Le- state legislation that might impact how we were approaching, um. Some of the capital connection situation, so I, because it's relatively new for me, I have to incorporate that into the review. Um, but I spoke with our town attorney today, and there's a number of, each situation is different. Um, but we are working to get resolution as quickly as possible. Some of it lends itself to statute of limitations. Um, and others don't, so.
So if we drag it out, are we forfeiting money through um, inaction? If we somehow run into a statute of limitations problem?
From my perspective, any statute of limitations. From my perspective, any statute of limitation prod- problem that we would have, has already passed, right? Like, a lot of these, I, I'm going to reserve comment on some of these things, because I, it really has to do with uh, working with our attorney. And so I'm not comfortable sharing everything at this time um, in this platform, but if you'd like to come and talk one on one, I'm happy to.
I would just like us to um, resolve a lot of these issues, we're talking about a lot of money.
For sure.
We all want to get it resolved. We inherited this mess.
I think we're really close with the alternative one, uh, personally at least, and, and like Jamie said, I think we should play with the numbers and, but I think we're pretty close with that. That's a good starting point.
A tool here that facilitates looking at it in the number of different ways.
Yeah, I mean, feel free to, you know, reach out to Similian, she can pass me any questions, it might be easy to funnel through one person instead of.
Can I, can I just ask that once, uh, I mean, I'll get in here and fiddle around too, but once the training occurs, can we get um, either just notified so we can either come in and sit down with whoever's trained, um, just so we're, we're actually reading the model correctly? Um, I, I, I don't think it's gonna be overly, I might just toss in chat.
I work with it every day, it's a.
Yeah, so yeah, you're probably buzzing around in there, me and Lori are gonna stare at each other, so.
Well, thank you, there's no more questions, uh, thank you for your presentation and your hard work on our behalf. We appreciate that. All right, I see nothing else on the agenda, is there any other business anybody needs to bring up? Not hearing any, is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
I can.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, thank you, very good meeting tonight.